And this is our special call meeting is July the 11th, 2019. I have a couple of issues, first of which is the public hearing for our 2020 budget, proposed budget. So, Mr. Peppers?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. The City of Canton is prepared to move forward with the adoption of property tax millage rate and begin the process of adopting the fiscal year 2020 budget. The City of Canton operates utilizing a variety of fund sources, including ad valorem taxes on real and personal property, sales taxes on consumable goods, enterprise fund revenues, user fees, fines, and development-related revenues through imposition of impact fees. The charter provides for the procedures for the approval of the budget and adoption of the millage rate. I will not read those sections, but it is in the budget document that you have. In 2017, the city entered into an agreement with Cherokee County to collect city property taxes on behalf of the city. In accordance with that agreement, the city's required under that agreement to provide a millage rate to the county annually by August 1st. The millage rate is the number by which each thousand dollars of real and personal property is taxed to provide funding for the operations of the city. The county tax assessor is responsible for calculating the fair market value on real and personal property in the county, including the property that is within the City of Canton. That fair market value is then discounted to a taxable value which is 40 percent. Taxable value is then multiplied by the millage rate to determine the taxes due for that property. So, for instance, James Smith's home is given a fair market value of $200,000. The City of Canton's current millage rate is 5.4 mils. So, $200,000 discounted to 40 percent for the taxable value is $80,000. Then multiplied by the millage rate of 5.4 leaves a tax liability of $432. According to state law, if the City of Canton utilizes any rate that is different than a revenue-neutral millage rate, the city must hold three public hearings to adopt the rate. One of those hearings must be between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m., two of those hearings must be at least five business days apart, and two of the three public hearings may be held on the same day, but only if one begins no later than 12:00 noon. The schedule for those public hearings includes this hearing at 11:00 a.m. on Thursday the 11th, one at 6:00 p.m. this evening, Thursday the 11th, and one at 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, July 25th. Following the third public hearing, the city can adopt the millage rate. If the council decides to proceed with a revenue-neutral millage rate or a rate less than that, there is only required to be one public hearing. The current millage rate for the city is 5.4 mils. That remains the lowest millage rate that we have had in the last 26 years, and I've given you a schedule of that. In 2017, the City of Canton began a contract with Cherokee County for the provision of fire and emergency services. Canton joined the cities of Ball Ground, Holly Springs, and Waleska in receiving those services for incorporated residents. The county assesses a fire district tax of 3.269 mils to pay for those services. The cities of Canton and Holly Springs pay a flat fee to the county based upon the application of the fire district millage rate across the digest for our cities. Including the provision of fire services, the area millage rates are as follows, from highest to lowest, Ball Ground, 8.269, Holly Springs, 7.999, Waleska, 6.924, Woodstock, 6.57, and Canton, 5.4. Our effective maintenance and operation millage rate, if you remove the fire millage rate, is 2.131 mils. Canton residents also benefit from the lowest sales tax in Georgia at 6 percent. Our seniors receive a full exemption of property taxes on fair market value of a home up to $280,000. That's the millage rate portion. On the annual operating budget, our proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2020 is That is an increase of $7.8 million over the prior year. Of that increase, 1.1 million is attributable to an increase in general funds of the city. The remaining 6.7 million comes from increased revenues in sales tax, impact fees, user fees, and the use of enterprise funds, including water, wastewater, stormwater, and sanitation. The current budget proposal does not include increases to water, wastewater, sanitation, or stormwater rates for residential customers. The city operates with 124 full-time employees. Of these, 11 are paid for fully through enterprise funds. The average hourly rate for pay for a non-exempt full-time employee is $19.74 per hour, which is actually a decrease of 5 cents per hour over last fiscal year. Taking this pay to further detail, non-exempt full-time employees that are traditional 40-hour-a-week employees or 20-80 employees, they earn an average of $18.34 an hour or $38,147 a year. Non-exempt full-time employees that are sworn police officers are considered 2236 employees working 2,236 hours a year and earn an average of $21.13 an hour or $47,245 a year. Full-time, non-exempt class of employees includes police officers through the rank of lieutenant, police, public works technicians, court clerks, inspectors, support managers, finance clerks, administrative assistants, utility billing customer service representatives, technology support, community development customer service representatives, records clerks, investigators, and maintenance. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, compensation costs for state and local government employees nationwide had increased by 3 percent in the prior 12-month period ending March 31st, 2019. Compensation costs for civilian workers was up 2.8 percent, and private industry workers also up 2.8 percent. In addition, reviewing the budgets available from surrounding markets, it was noted that Roswell is doing a 3 percent across-the-board pay increase. Sandy Springs is doing 4 percent for public safety plus non-sworn varied bonuses. Cherokee County is entertaining a 3 percent across-the-board increase. Alpharetta has a 3 percent across-the-board increase, and Marietta is also slated to review employee pay increases. The current proposed budget reflects a 2.8 percent cost of living allowance across the board for all city staff to match the employee cost index 2.8 percent provided through March with the Bureau of Labor Statistics. That equates to an average increase of 55 cents per hour per employee. The budget reflects the addition of five new full-time positions. Two are police officers, one is a police department support bureau assistant, one is a probation officer for municipal court, and the fifth one is a custodian. With the new positions, the Canton Police Department will grow to 60 employees, of which 52 are sworn positions. The general fund reflects the elimination of the former Police Department Buildings budget, which has been transferred into the general government Buildings account because the 151 Elizabeth Building houses more than just the police department. We're rolling that into general government Buildings. There are seven vehicles projected to be added in the city's fleet for this budget. That includes five new vehicles for police. Three of those are replacement vehicles. Two of those are based on the two new positions requested in the budget. There's also a new Ford F-150 and Grapple trailer for sanitation to assist with brush pickup and other public works projects. The proposed FY20 budget is an increase of 1.1 million in the general fund expenditures. Of that increase, $500,000 or 45.3 percent is for the contractual increase in payments to Cherokee County for fire services based upon new development and increased digest value. $200,000 or 18 percent is a building maintenance project related to the Wind Day 51 Elizabeth Street. $130,000 or 11.8 percent is in community development for specialized planning projects including the housing study and Marietta Road community initiative projects. $80,686 or 7 percent is for the creation of a new in-house probation program. $46,000 or 4.2 percent is an increase in expenditures for personnel and police. $43,000 or 3.9 percent is an increase in parks maintenance. The remaining 9.8 percent is shared across all categories of the budget to account for a 10 percent increase in health insurance, 2.8 percent cola, 2 percent increase in electricity, 5 percent increase in property and casualty insurance, and 5 percent increase in workers' compensation. Beyond those specific expenses, increases reflected in budget areas include an increase in elections of 72.7 percent, and that is based off of historical data of what our elections are costing us over the past few years. There's a 19.8 percent increase in the human resources function, but really that's a transfer of a portion of a position from finance into HR. So, you'll see an increase in that budget area, a decrease in the finance budget area. General admin shows a significant decrease of 11.5 percent. We paid for that study to convert from SIC to NEX code for business licensing out of general administration, and that is not in next year's budget. And then we have also shifted a portion of funds from communication and outreach's budget into the new downtown development position budget. Since 2013, the city's utilized reserves to keep our property taxes low. In the current fiscal year that we are in now, council opted to utilize 1.5 million in transfers from the Water and Wastewater Enterprise Fund. The fiscal year 2020 budget utilizes 871,684 in unassigned fund balance and a half million dollar in transfer from Water and Wastewater Enterprise Fund for contingency. New housing starts are driving growth within the city, but these also come at a cost. While the senior tax exemption provides a benefit to attracting new citizens, last year there was a growth in exempted properties due to the senior tax exemption from 2,074 exemptions to 2,308 exemptions, or 11 percent more properties that are paying reduced taxes, if paying taxes at all, for the services that those residents demand, which include public safety. This is a particular hit to the city's budget as the cost of fire services with the county is based on the total digest. As the exempted property category continues to grow, the non-exempted properties will continue to offset the. And this cannot be accomplished long-term through the continued use of fund balance or property tax rollbacks. Without the use of unassigned fund balance or a transfer from the Water and Wastewater Enterprise Fund, the current proposed budget will require a millage rate of 6.8 mils. We appreciate your consideration of our proposed 2020 operating budget and our millage rate recommendation, and we're excited to answer any questions that you might have and work with you in the process as we review the budget and millage rate so that we can serve efficiently and effectively for our citizens. I'm happy to answer any questions after public.
Thank you. I guess what we probably should do is open up the public hearing first and then get whatever public input we have, and then we'll open it up for the discussion. And we, if you wanted to speak, you would need to sign up on the speaker's list here. And we have one, Mr. Weaver. If you'd like to come forward and.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I support the administration's recommendation on the 2020 budget presentment, and I also support the advertised millage rate and the enabling ordinance that has been posted on the city's website pursuant to state law, and I have reviewed all the materials thoroughly. As each of you may recall, I had sent a mass email to each of you, and I am requesting that you take into consideration, in addition to all the other aspects of the budget, earmarking some small equipment funds for the expansion of the handgun storage lockers to the new public safety courthouse facility that's been branded as such, just as you've done here. Hopefully, there will be funds available through small equipment revenues that will not interfere with voter-mandated, non-discretionary, or city obligatory spending that would be available. Also, I don't want to get too far into the weeds of the line-by-line analysis of the budget because I don't understand every particular article and as far as the line item and the expenditure, but I did notice one thing with, that kind of jumped off the page to me. If you look on, under Part 4 of the budget, starting on page 66 of the full budget, you'll see all of the special revenues that the city is able to capture through special funds. And if you look on, I believe it's Part 4, Page 5, that's the hotel and motel fund. And the city gives its anticipated hotel and motel revenues. And then on the next page, it shows the anticipated expenditures for those funds and in specificity, the library supplement. Currently, there's $20,000, of which I believe $8,000 has thus been spent on the library supplement, but the proposed 2020 budget shows that that fund's been canceled out. And as a library user, I'm, I don't speak for the library, but the Sequoia Regional Library Board of Trustees, I do not believe, have taxation power, and they cannot levy a millage Sonia Little's office. And I know that traditionally and historically, library funds came from the funding city and county partners on the region-wide basis, which for our region includes Pickens and Gilmer County also. So, they're, they, they hold share in that too, but to the extent that the city's amount has been dotted out, I just kind of was curious to maybe learn more about that. And maybe it's not. Maybe it can be done through general funds. That may be the case. I don't want to speculate as to how that would or wouldn't work. I'd have to ask elsewhere. But again, that was a concern for me because I do use that service often. I know that historically, that's been funded in part by the city. But aside from those two concerns, I do support the millage rate as presented. I do support the enabling ordinance. I look forward to learning more about the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The only one that has signed up, so we'll open it up to the council for any questions or comments. Uh, Ms. McGrath?
Mr. Peppers, could you tell me, please, how much we are currently paying to have a probation service?
We currently are not paying for probation services, so what happens is an individual is sentenced through municipal court, part of their sentence is probation. They pay that fee directly to a third party, which the city has contracted with to provide those services. So, those dollars are receipted on a private side by a private company, so they don't flow through the city. Under the current discussion that we've had with mayor and council about taking probation management in-house, we have increased the expenditures in the municipal court function for probation management. We have also increased revenues in the general fund function for those dollars that would come in from the probationer. So, instead of spending, I believe it was $35 a month? I think it's $35 a month per probationer. Instead of them spending those dollars directly with that third-party contractor, they would make payment to the City of Canton, and we would use those funds to basically offset the cost of probation management. So, you'll see an increase in revenue, an increase in expenditure for that function coming in-house.
How close do you think it will pay for itself? What percentage do you think it will offset?
Oh, we, we expect 100 percent of it to be offset.
So, you think that the revenue that we receive from probationers will pay the salary of our probation officer?
We expect so.
So, it's a neutral thing?
Right. We, we budget it as basically a revenue and expense-neutral addition to the budget.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ms. Wilson?
Okay. Well, I have quite a few questions, but I'll, I'll try to maybe ask a few at a time so everybody can have their turn. But first of all, I just want to thank everyone for their great work on the budget. I think I've commented like in years past, the department has, I think, did a great job, but in years past, the budgets were more of a copy and paste, and, and I noticed, you know, that, that expenses, budget expenses, you know, even when they weren't spent, were just carried over into the new budgets, sort of like if you don't have it, you don't spend it approach. But I know that that's changed, and I really appreciate that. I think it's a much more accurate approach. I appreciate everyone's good work on this. A couple of, I guess, larger questions that I have, some line item questions, but on the, the police department salary and benefits, we are adding three new positions, but the salary increases, I mean, the salary and benefits are both, are practically the same almost, and I think there's a difference of $10,000. How is that, could you explain that to me or why, why the difference is so low with three new positions?
Uh, some of it is attrition. So, some of it could be that you had a senior employee retire or no longer be employed here, and that new position's coming in at a lower cost. So, that's a little bit of it. We did something differently this year with police department specifically. We went about their budget from a zero-based standpoint. So, Chief Mitchell and his leadership staff have been working with Mr. Ingram and the finance staff, basically crafting a budget as if it started from scratch. You know, in prior years, as you mentioned, there were some copy forward of certain things. And so, I think we've seen some savings as it relates to that zero-based budget strategy. Again, the police department represents about $5 million, roughly $5 million of expenditures, which is almost what we bring in, in our total millage rate. And so, as the largest expenditure that we have, it's very important for us to look at their operations on an annual basis to come up with, you know, the best allocation of those funds. But I, I think, I think in the basics, it's some of that, and it's also some attrition that's allowed us to keep that personnel cost down even as we expand positions.
I think it's a great thing. I was just curious how we accomplish that. So, and will we, we be fully staffed with the three new positions or?
You never know. I mean, it, and so, one of the things that we've actually suggested in the budget, we're down a couple of positions now, I believe. One of the things that we suggested in the budget is that we don't, we don't, PD doesn't go out and initially search for those two new patrol positions, delay that until January so that we know that we are fully staffed with the existing positions that we have going into the year. That's a little bit of a difference, too. In prior years, the police department budget, you would see what was budgeted for expenses and what was actually spent. There was generally a pretty good gap, and some of that is we have to budget for a position, and then, you know, you have an officer leave, move to another area, and you're carrying that position. It generally takes us about six months to go from the hiring process to get that person on the road by themselves. And so, there's also training involved in that. So, for instance, if we go out and we hire someone with absolutely no police experience, we're sending them through the academy, we may have a certain cost for that position. We hire somebody, they get through as a recruit with the academy, get through a couple of sessions, decide they don't want to become a police officer. Well, for us, we're glad that they've made that decision early on, you know? But we do see some attrition that affects those numbers a little bit in there.
And that kind of brings me to my next question. So, we're budgeting for two new vehicles for the two new officers, and if an officer leaves or two, would we put them in a vehicle so we wouldn't necessarily have to purchase new vehicles?
So, what you'll specifically see in the police department budget is we took the vehicles that they were requesting new and put that in that contingency category for the police chief. Because, like you said, if we've got a vacancy and we're hiring for it, and we've got a vehicle sitting out there, we don't need to go and buy a new veh, that new vehicle sit there. So, the replacement vehicles that we've added in the budget, the three, I think those will probably be moved on, you know, with some expediency, just understanding that, you know, on our end, we're looking at it thinking that those first 2013 Tahos that we have that are going to be the ones that we're going to be replacing, we're kind of interested because that's our first group of Tahos, to see what they're going to bring in when we surplus those and put them out to auction. A little bit of research we've done, they do carry a pretty good value. The more miles we put on them, the less, of course, that value comes down. And so, we're looking into that, but we've moved the new vehicles for new positions into that contingency so that we're not buying them unless we've got the person here.
So, $300,000 in contingencies, is that just for the two new vehicles, or is that three replacement and two?
We put all the vehicles in contingency, but two of those are specific to the new positions.
Okay. So, is that approximately six vehicles that, and five vehicles, that's 60,000 each? Are those, the new patrol officers go into the same vehicles as?
I believe of the vehicles they requested, there's three replacement vehicles, there's one vehicle that is not a Tahoe, it's an Explorer for detective's position, which is new in this year's budget, so it's, so it's a new vehicle for that. Most of them are around that 50, $55,000 range though for the Tahos. But I will say that since we have converted from the Crown Vix to the Tahos, we feel like our maintenance costs have gone down, and it's actually, we're getting a little bit more life on them than we thought we were going to get. So, one of the things in this year's budget, I don't remember the number of 13s that we have, maybe five, five or six 2013s, we only think we're going to have to replace three of them.
Okay. A couple more questions, and I'll give other people a chance, but, and again, I should preface this, none of these questions are questioning legitimacy or anything, it's just trying to understand this better. On the theater budget, we had a 16.4 percent increase in the budget, $148,832. I, I know we have new employee there, and we're, we're really improving the programming there, which I think is great. I think I saw later in the budget where we had maybe a little over $40,000 in ticket sales. I just wanted to ask if there were any other revenue sources for the theater. I guess my basic question is, how much of a loss are we operating on the theater each year? I guess the theater is a great service, should be considered a service to our citizens, but, but what, what does that service costing us?
Correct.
Approximately?
So, one of the things that you should know about for last year and this year, we have put capital funds into the theater to get some projects done that were necessary. So, last year, we replaced all the, all the carpet in the theater. So, we spent more money, we definitely spent more money last year than we made. This year, we went in and we replaced all the curtains in the theater. I think they've completed that, or very close to completing that right now, to bring our curtains into the fire code. They need to be redone. We don't see any major capital expenses next year, but now that we're finished with those projects, the current theater manager is looking at how we bring in more shows and more activities while also having the theater available for more rentals. We had kind of stopped that rental process for special events and activities because we had so much capital work that we were doing in the facility. We don't really know what it's going to equate to in next year's budget, so we haven't really projected that in revenue because we're not quite ready for it. I do know that right now, one of the things that, that Kristin is really focused on is hammering out better contracts as it relates to our, our production companies that are doing shows within theater so that there's better expectancy of what revenues we bring off of that. So, this year, we probably will operate with another loss, but we've got, you know, we've got a new position in there. I don't know what it will be, though. Our goal, and what I've charged that employee with, is to get us out of the loss category. You know, we understand it's the arts, it, it's going to have some years where it breaks even and probably have some years where it doesn't break even, but we specifically fund all of that out of the hotel motel tax. And so, even, even where it shows up in the general fund budget, it's because we're transferring funds from our hotel motel tax to offset those costs in the general fund. So, 100 percent of the theater cost is being paid for with what we collect at hotels across the city from out-of-town visitors.
Under franchise fees, cable TV, one of my favorite topics. Can you explain to me, and we've discussed this before, like in fiscal year 17, you know, the, the franchise fees actually were like $157,819. In, in fiscal year 18 through 20, it's been lower, around $152,000. Why are those franchise fees for cable TV decreasing when, when our residences are increasing? So, in others, the franchise fees are increasing, our tax revenues are increasing, our fire services fees are increasing because based on new, the population increasing.
Sure. I think a lot of it has to do with technology. It's just, it's just like our franchise fees on telecom. People are using their cell phones. People are, you know, using their data plans on their cellphone coverage to do their TVs, utilizing Hulu and Roku and things like that as opposed to traditional cable. And unfortunately- And unfortunately, my opinion is the Public Service Commission hasn't really thought out that process. You know, these franchise fees are based on infrastructure that are being placed in our right-of-ways that we have maintenance on, so we're leasing that space to them. Well, when the right-of-way is in the sky and it's part of, part of that cloud-based industry, they're not really using the same areas. And so we're not receiving those fees as we normally would. And then, of course, we also are hamstrung by the Public Service Commission on what revenues we do get from those industries as it relates to business licenses and things like that. So eventually, those numbers are going to continue to dwindle. And I'm sure, I'm sure if Georgia Power had a way where they could provide electricity through the cloud, we'd see that franchise go down as well. But those are two particular areas that we're going to continue to see go down, even as we see the number of households go up.
Now, revenue, I'll ask one more and then I'll let Ms. Wilson and other people take a turn because they may be asking some of these same questions. But on water and sewer proprietary funds, water tap fees are projected same as fiscal year nineteen, but lower than fiscal year eighteen. Sewer charges are estimated actual nineteen or lower than budget. And fiscal year twenty is same as fiscal year nineteen. Sewer tap fees, why are they lower fiscal year nineteen than when our actual projected fees are higher? So to me, all those, you know, given our water and sewer needs are somewhat alarming, but that the trend is going the wrong direction there, so.
Well, some of it is project-specific. So where we were high in seventeen, eighteen is the hospital project. So as we, you know, the question we always get into is, you may have a project that's approved, but will the construction and the tap fees actually come in the next fiscal year? So a great example of that, if you're going up Bluffs Parkway and you see the project that's being developed by Lennar, we still don't have any out-of-the-ground construction out there on homes. And so there's no tap fees coming in yet, even though that project approved. It is an enterprise fund, which means that as those dollars come in, they are spent within that enterprise. And so that gives us that flexibility. We always try to go as cautious as we can on those development fees because if we do, if we do say projects are going to take off and then some type of recession hits and they don't, we budget those expenses, then we could have some issues there.
All right. Again, I just said this before, I think it's just something we need to keep in mind as our fees are growing and our needs are growing and we have people approaching us wanting reductions in those services. To me, there's some discrepancy, especially on the commercial rates when, to me, so the consumers wind up paying some of the difference there. So I'll turn it over.
Really great is when we finish talking about this, you're going to hear about rate structures for our rate analysis, so.
Yeah, look forward to it.
I just have a couple of general questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And a thank you to the citizens who've come today to hear the budget process. And the questions I have relate to the two items that Mr. Weaver brought to our attention. The first is that a handgun storage locker over in municipal court. I know we have one here, I just wanted to know how often it's used.
I don't stand out there, so I really don't know. I know that sounds bad, but I will get you that answer to that.
That's okay, it's just a general question.
Our officers should know because they do, they do provide service out there, so they may have.
So are people allowed to bring a handgun to the municipal court?
So the way the state law is set up, well, a couple of things. They're not supposed to have one in municipal court. Now, the law was changed to allow for folks with law enforcement licenses, retired law enforcement to be able to carry theirs in. But if we did have some type of locker facility there, individuals that come in with something that is not allowed to be in the courtroom would have the opportunity to store it in that locker as opposed to taking it back to their vehicle. So in talking with Judge Roach about the issue, his thought was, he doesn't really mind having that capability. He sees it more of a benefit. One of our court rules is that you're not supposed to have your purse in court. And so.
So you could leave your purse?
Every, every, you know, twice a month when court's going on, we end up with individuals that try to get into the courtroom, they've got their purse. He thinks it sure would be nice if they'd be able to store it over there instead of having to turn somebody around.
Okay, right.
Car. So we haven't budgeted for it, but we do have a line item in there for, for equipment. That's where it would come from. You know, to date, he doesn't have a problem with a storage locker. He's just not sure that something like we have out here is going to be sufficient if we're going to allow people to store. We're kind of looking at options.
Right, that's why I asked you if this one was used, if it wasn't, if we could move it there where it seems like it might be of more use. So I don't know. But I think it, you know, if you can't take your purse into the courtroom, we probably need somewhere to store them that would be safe, so we need to look at that. The other issue that Mr. Weaver raised was about the library, and I know I had to ask you about. And I believe that what you told me, last year, how much did we appropriate for the library?
Last year's appropriation was twenty-five thousand, is that right, twenty thousand?
And this year, we're appropriating it from two different sources, right?
Last, so two years ago, we paid for the library out of the general fund.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Last year, we shipped that library cost from the general fund to the rental car tax. Again, it's an opportunity to use a fund source that allows that to be an expenditure without asking our citizens to pay for it. We haven't budgeted it this year because it's one of those issues that's still up in the air over service delivery. Not saying that we wouldn't pay it, but if part of the service delivery strategy negotiation comes back and says, "Look, libraries are truly a county-wide service. They should be paid for out of the county-wide taxes so that everybody's paying the same amount," then the city wouldn't be writing a check to the library. So we've kind of held it as a zero. But we do have funds in the rental car tax fund so that if service delivery determines that, yes, we do still want to have some type of contract with the library, we can put that in at this point.
Okay, so we would not be cutting our funding to the library unless, I mean, the only reason we would not pay funds to the library that we have in the past is if the county appropriated those funds during that procedure that we're going to be looking at down the road.
Correct. So, so at heart of the issue is, the county makes an appropriation every year for the libraries. And you, as a taxpayer who lives in the county, are paying for that through the county. Well, if the city is additionally making a contribution to the library, then you are paying twice while someone that lives out in free home is only paying once.
Right, right.
So that's, that's kind of the negotiation area that we're in, and we've got to get that settled.
Okay.
If council so desires to provide funding to the library, we can do it out of the rental car tax.
But I think it's something we can look at after service delivery.
That's correct.
And see how it works out, and then we can look at it. Because I don't want us to, to shortchange the library, because I know all of us use it. So, so we'll hold that in advance until after service.
Well, and the argument back to that is, if, if the libraries are requiring additional funds to operate, then everybody in Cherokee County should be paying that additional amount.
Right.
And it won't hit everybody as hard as if just the people of Canton pay their share.
Right, thanks, thanks for that, and thanks for bringing it up, Mr. Weaver.
What, where the purses going now in the courtroom?
They have to go back to their car and drop them off at their vehicle.
So they're making, so they're not allowing any purses and?
That's correct.
Okay. Ferris?
I had a few things that haven't, one, Mr. Weaver and Ms. Wilson marked one of mine off with the library. In technology, are we outsourcing the GIS or has this just been shifted?
We are, and we, so what has happened, last year, we, if you recall, we have been outsourcing GIS and technology to an extent with. The first year we worked with them, our IT expenditures were much higher because we were working on improving our systems and our equipment. Last year, we were able to bring the IT dollars up, but we moved some more of that money so we could get our mapping in a better spot. We're doing that through a contract, so we don't have a staff person in that position. When we started last budget year, we did budget for a staff person in there, but because we were spending so many hours trying to get the framework built up, we determined not to pay the staff person, but to have the contracted person fill in that additional time. The budget continues to reflect that, only this year, we've removed the dollars from salary and added it into the line item for professional services. GIS is such a specialized field, and so our ability to have somebody who's working with a third party, who's getting constant training, who's looking at other communities and how they deal with certain issues, it's easier for me to, to do that through a contract than it would be for me to have a full-time employee, maybe at a lower rate of pay, but have to provide additional training and, and assets to, to be able to get the same level of training and experience. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you. And on the water and sewage fund, looks like there's been a lot of, is it reclassification or just shifting functions? Money's moving from different categories around. I mean, the bottom line's in line, but like you have line items with massive discrepancies, some higher, some lower. Is it just things being reclassified and are shifted around or?
Most of it's capital projects. Closeout of projects in one year, start of projects in the next year, reallocation of projects. Sometimes you'll, you know, we'll go into a year thinking we're going to have, preparing for a lot of expenditures for replacement of water lines or sewer lines that might have issues in them and then not have them. Or those have been addressed through another project, and so it's just moving those around on an annual basis.
That's what I figured, I just wanted to, I saw it, so I just wanted to bring it forward so people can be aware. Ms. McGrew covered the probation question ahead. My quick just thumbnail was about showing about fifteen thousand profit out of that, or did I have that wrong?
Yeah, we, I mean, we've, we've tried to be conservative on it based on what we see off of each court that we're generally getting in probationers. You know, it's really going to be an estimate that first year. And so, you know, as I've expressed to Ms. Fitz and also to Judge Roach, you know, could be they bring in more revenues, it could be they bring in less revenues, could find out that, you know, it brings in enough revenues and maybe it's not a one-person job, maybe it's a two-person job. That may be one of those particular funds that if we start seeing revenues coming in at a higher rate than we thought, we may look at that as a budget amendment later on in the year.
Do we have any idea when this person might come online or when you're proposing to?
So what, what I have, what we've started right now, we've already started the process of drafting the job description. Once council approves the budget, I would like to go ahead and advertise for the position so that we could try to have that person starting on October one. Some of that's going to depend on handoff between our current probation services. So anybody who is currently receiving a probation service from that third party will continue to receive that service through that third party even after we take on management in-house. It would be all new cases from a date set forward, if that makes sense.
My other question was more of a general, and it was brought up by the, talking about the police vehicles, so this is not necessarily just for them. But what general criteria do you use to determine it's time to replace a vehicle? Is it age, is it mileage, is it maintenance cost, or a combination?
It's probably a combination of all of those. One of the discussions that, that Mr. Ingram and I have been having is that, you know, when we buy a Tahoe, for instance, and we outfit it for a police vehicle, it's fifty, fifty-five thousand dollar expenditure. When we buy a new vehicle, some of that equipment that we have in the old vehicle doesn't automatically transfer to the new vehicle because the style of the body changes. And so, you know, the, the glass that's between the front and the back may not fit in the new vehicle like it did the old one. So there are certain losses that we take on equipment. One of the things we've been looking at is, when you, when we sell a vehicle in the future, are we seeing a significant difference in what is returned from the purchase when you get to a certain threshold on mileage? So we're looking at other jurisdictions and where they're selling theirs at of a similar vehicle because it may be to the point where we say, look, if we can sell that 2014 Tahoe that has eighty-five or ninety thousand miles on it and get several thousand dollars more in return, it may be in our interest to go ahead and surplus that now so that we can put those funds towards a new vehicle as opposed to waiting until it has really hit the end of its useful life and we're only getting pennies in return. So it's, since this is a new vehicle for us in the surplus side, it's going to take us a year or so to figure out what that prime position is. Now, there are companies out there that are doing fleet maintenance. Basically, it's a capital lease program, so we're leasing those vehicles from them because they know when to, they've got the math worked out, you know. A company like Enterprise, they, they have enough vehicles, they've worked out the math. They know when they need to pull it back in and try to resell it and get the maximum dollar out of it. So there's options like that, but traditionally, we haven't enjoyed capital leases in the city. One, because of the size of our fleet, and two, because we like to own our, our own things. So we're, over the next year, we should see more discussion about that and hopefully have better answers.
And use the same general criteria for our pickups and all that stuff?
Well, what we've tried to do with our pickups is a little bit different. We've tried to, as you're aware, when we receive funds on the building side as it relates to permits and plan review and all that, we should generally be spending about the same amount of money in that budget that we received because it's user fee-based, and we try to do that. So what we have done in prior years is we have purchased, say, a vehicle in the building department, used that vehicle for three or four years for that function, and then transferred it over to the public works department where, you know, they need a vehicle, but maybe they're willing to haul it, you know. And so when we get ready to surplus vehicles, what you generally find is that the vehicles we surplus that are coming out of public works are a decade or more in age. We're not getting as much money back from them, but we're getting a lot of useful life out of that. So we do try to shift vehicles based on how it can be best used in its next life.
Thank you.
Ms. McGrew?
This may be pulling this out of the air, but what was our debt at the beginning of this fiscal year, fiscal year?
Mr. Ingram can, Mr. Ingram can pull that number out of the air better than I can.
Let me go on with other questions. What, this, these are going to be repeat answers because you went through it when you read. What is the fire district millage for the county?
Three point two six nine.
Three point two six nine. And bear with me, will you tell me what the millage rate for Woodstock is going to be? We'll be bogging down.
Six point seven two.
Ball Brown?
Eight point two, theirs is proposed because, again, fiscal years change, but their current one is eight point two six nine.
Waleska?
Six point nine two four. Now, keep in mind, what I've done with Ball Brown and Waleska is I've taken their M and O millage rate, which they set, and I've added to it the three point two six nine that is the fire district. So they're different in that in those two cities, the city bills for their maintenance and operation, the county bills for the tax district. Holly Springs and Canton absorb the tax district but pay for them out of our own millage rate. Does that make sense?
What is Holly Springs?
Seven point nine nine nine.
We are the lowest millage rate in the county.
Correct.
So we're operating the city on two-plus mills over and above what we give the county for fire. What is our major source of revenue? Is that property tax?
Property tax is a portion. Our enterprise funds are our largest share of revenue. And there are some charts, actually, I think it's on our. This may be a little bit difficult to see in the back, but if you look at, these are general funds. So these do not equate for our enterprise funds, water, wastewater, sewer. funds, so these do not equate for our enterprise funds, water, wastewater, sewer. So when you're talking about general funds, property tax makes up about forty percent of that general fund component. Then, the next largest fund in there is business taxes, occupational taxes at sixteen percent, franchise fees and taxes thirteen percent, license and permits eight percent, and then all the others are less than five percent. So property tax is the largest piece of the general fund budget. When we add in enterprise funds, those are much larger.
Okay. And how much money are we moving from our fund balance and enterprise funds to this budget?
This budget reflects a transfer of eight hundred, one second, eight hundred, eight hundred seventy-one thousand six eighty-four in unassigned fund balance and a half million dollars from water and wastewater.
Please repeat, I'm sorry.
Eight hundred and seventy-one thousand six eighty-four in fund balance reserves, five hundred thousand from water and wastewater.
Thank you. And let's see, our contributions to the arts center and the history society?
That's one of the fund sources where I would like to have more discussion with council. What we did, I believe, on the, let me get to it real quick. We currently have twenty-five thousand in here for the historical society, and we have a blank in here for the arts center. Now, the arts center made a request to us that we received a couple weeks ago, thirty-five thousand? Thirty-five thousand dollars. Last year, we paid them twenty-five thousand dollars. Again, that's a, that's a different kind of fund source, so that's one where we can still, you know, play around on the discussion side. It doesn't affect the millage rate, so to speak.
Some of our county funds, some of our city taxpayer monies could also be being used through the county support, right?
That's correct.
In other words, we, whatever we get, we're giving them, our taxpayers may also be paying what the county pays for or gives to them.
And I was gonna ask about the
Possibly.
service delivery. Is that going to be part of our negotiations? Because we're already paying the county, and it is a county organization.
I think it is something to bring up as part of that. Remember, the historical society one is a little bit different in that we're basically helping them buy the building from us, so the twenty-five thousand dollars we have in that particular budget for them is coming back as a payment to the city.
Right. So when will we start having this discussion about what we're giving?
Anytime you would like to.
Okay. And Mr. Ingram, do you have the debt now? I'm sorry?
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine million.
At the beginning?
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-nine million, and what is it now?
It's twenty-nine in September of eighteen, and he'll run a report and try to get us a number here soon, on the current level. Some of it has to deal with when payments are actually made on those.
And did we pay down from the previous fiscal year?
We have, we have paid off now
It's gonna be about two to three million dollars.
Two, thirty-two million last year.
Okay.
I think, remind me if I'm wrong, we have now paid off the YMCA. No, the YMCA is next year. The golf course is now paid off, we paid it off in December of last year. And after that, the only thing that's left is water and sewer-related debt.
Slow and steady wins the race, for sure. Thank you so much.
All right. What would you anticipate our population increase last year would be in the city? I guess.
What we saw as the last estimate is twenty-nine, three hundred some odd residents. I think the year before, we were at like twenty, twenty-eight and some change. So we're adding a, I would say we're adding about a thousand residents a year. I think that's a fair, fair assessment.
So that would be, that'd be about a, what, three or four percent increase in population and a seven point four percent increase in our, the taxes that will be collected for the general fund. So, I mean, not everybody, it's not like, you know, everybody just gets an increase because of the millage, but overall, didn't the digest go up about seven, a little over seven percent? Was it that much?
It's sort of
Okay. So even though our population increased by three or four, and I don't know what that number exactly is, our taxes are going up that our citizens will pay by seven point four percent. Is that a fair statement?
Well, no, the seven point four percent also accounts for new development that's occurred. So for instance, where we annexed in the shopping center out on Highway twenty, that'll show up in our digest this year as new. It's not additional taxes that you would be paying necessarily at your home to help support that, we're getting the revenues off of that individual property coming in.
Right.
So about half of the increase that we see in our, in our taxes, in our property taxes from the digest are coming from new development, and about half of it is coming from increased property value by existing property owners.
But they, whatever, if you got a tax increase assessment notice, that millage rate will be applied against that, so that whatever that is, is what you'll be paying more, right?
That's correct.
And so, I, I don't know if everybody got one or not. Did everybody get one on here, a tax assessment? No? Okay. I think mine was a little more than the
From the county?
Yeah, from the county.
Right.
Right. Which is what our taxes are based on, of course. Once again, to go back and rehash my rant about the water and sewer fund, from the beginning, many years ago here, we had a situation which I thought was inherently unfair. That is, that we had some of our residents, River Green, Great Sky, Prominence Point area, Laurel Canyon, they were paying a streetlight bill every month, added on to their water and sewer bill. Well, I lived on Cherokee Street, I didn't have that. Anybody downtown in the older neighborhoods, they didn't pay it. That seemed inherently unfair to me. We changed it. So now we pay all our streetlight bills from the general fund. Well, we got a situation here in our city now where we have some residents who are on the water, the county water and sewer authority, pay them their bill, okay? We got some that pay the city. Well, when we take money out of the, out of the enterprise fund of water and sewer, we're not taking everybody's money, we're only taking about those, money from those who are on the Canton system. Those on the county system, they're buying soccer ball, we're buying soccer balls for them. I mean, somehow or another, it seems inherently unfair to me. But anyway, I think we got a lot of issues to do that. That's got little to do with the budget, except to say that, as you know, I'm, I don't favor, because of the needs in the water and sewer department, taking that half million dollars out of the water and sewer fund and putting it in the general fund.
Okay.
I think that's my rant for the day, I believe.
That was short.
Yep, great.
I have a couple more questions, and I'll try to leave them the big items, I don't want anyone to my right accuse me of being cheap. On the general admin, professional services, hundred thousand dollars, can you explain? I know last year it was a hundred and thirty thousand, but I know in years past, it's been well under that, but what are those professional services cover, basically?
That's the city attorney comes out of that line item, also the city's audit comes out of that line item. And so last year, it also included that business license study that was done.
Okay.
And so you'll see it come down this year, but the two, the two biggest portions of that piece are our legal fees and our auditing fees.
Okay. And then municipal court salaries, temporary salary, thirty thousand dollars, we've never had that before in the last, since sixteen, what is that for?
It's the probation adding that, adding probation in.
Under temporary salaries, or? It's temporary salaries.
Yes. So in temporary salaries, what we have there is we have some funding next year so that we can scan and digitize some of our paper records so that we can cut back on some of the use of space in that building. We have done that in the last two years now in the building department with great success in digitizing files, and so that's, there's some funding in there to do that.
Okay. Planning and zoning, professional services, increase from five thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand?
That includes funding for study, residential study.
Oh, housing study, that's our housing study, okay. And then explain to me, I know I asked this a couple weeks ago, that hotel motel taxes, why are we projecting lower hotel motel taxes when the actuals for year after year have been higher?
Some of it is, well, so some of it you have to look at on actuals is based on the time. So there are certain months that we get more in revenue and certain months we get less in revenue. In the past, last year, for instance, we budgeted to spend much more in hotel motel taxes than we collected because we were utilizing some fund balance that we had. Of the hundred percent of the pie that we bring in in hotel taxes, thirty-seven and a half percent of that can be used on anything the city wants. So if you wanted to take those revenues and dump it specifically into the general fund to offset the police cars, you could do that. Twenty-five percent of the pie has to be spent on tourism, marketing, and so we have generally given those dollars to tourism or Main Street to help with that. Eighteen point seven five of that pie goes to tourism product development or bricks and mortar. We have traditionally used that at the theater or for sign projects. And then the other eighteen point seven five percent also has to be spent on promoting tourism, but it has to be spent on someone that has a five oh one C six, again, tourism or Main Street. I think where we put the number at this year was the fact that some years we hit it and some years we don't. We've tried to be as accurate based on the monthly totals, month to month comparison a year as possible. But again, even if the revenues come in above what we've projected, we still have to spend them in that, in those categories of the pie.
Right.
So this is one of those fund sources where you may see a mid-year budget adjustment or a budget amendment based on where the revenues are and the expenditures are, which is what we have done in the last year.
I understand how we standard it. My question was, is there a trend that's pointing that we're gonna have less in taxes, hotel motel taxes, or?
Well, so for instance, there's some belief, we've, we've got a couple of hotel projects where we're doing review right now, certain people would say, oh, well, you've got new hotels that are coming in, you need to go ahead and raise your revenues. Well, you know, maybe not. It may be that this person chooses to stay at this hotel instead of this hotel. So when you get a new project on, it doesn't necessarily mean that the total pie is growing, it could, it could just mean that people are changing brands within that pie.
Okay. Impact fee expenditures, capital outlay, equipment, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
That is for roads.
Police department trainings.
Oh, that's correct. So the police department's adding a training simulator to their new space, and that's one of those things that fits under impact fees because it has at least a ten-year lifespan. And so when we collect impact fees on new development, so much goes to recreation, so much goes to transportation, so much goes to public safety, so much goes to fire. Fire piece, we send over to the county. The roads piece is allocated to specific roads within the city and is only to increase capacity on those roads. Parks, of course, is easy, that's when we expand parks and trails. In public safety, it can only be used on assets that have a ten-year lifespan, and so the simulator, we were able to move out of the general fund and not make it a SPOSS project because it fits that lifespan. So basically, they're gonna have a room in there where they can do their simulations of certain activities and training without having to go off-site to have it.
Thank you, I was just curious what a impact fee, equipment expenditure was, so. And then one last, solid waste, capital outlay vehicles, a hundred and ninety thousand, is that the truck and the trailer?
That's correct, that's for brush.
And that's for brush and other sanitation-related pickups?
Right, correct.
And then you had seven total vehicles, five police, this would be, six, and then seventh would be building department?
Seventh was the building department, correct.
Okay. Cause your overview letter had seven, but didn't list the building department, but it was in the budgets lineup, so I just wanted to make sure, so. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll save some for next hearings.
Anyone else have a question? And just, and just so you're aware, these documents, as well as this budget, that's maybe an easier version for people to look at, are on our website. We've got links out on social media for them as well, so if you get asked questions, if you need that information, or you need us to help answer any questions, just let us know.
Let, let me say what a really great job I think y'all have done. Billy, Nathan, Melissa, Linda, all those in the accounting department, and have just done an amazing job, and I appreciate it. It's an awesome undertaking, as you can see, I mean, a lot of numbers out there, a lot of numbers. There's only one exception, that's us taking water and giving some people representation without taxation. That's exactly what we've done in that side.
You do have to remember, on the water fund, one of the things we have to do to get that wonderful fire ISO rating is have a water system. And so whether it's an incorporated resident or unincorporated resident, when the fire truck pulls up, they're hoping to tap into a really good fire line. And so, you know, at least that's where we come from in that number.
I understand. Anyone else?
I think we run a very tight ship. The numbers are lean. Thank you.
Well, we hope so.
And I, I wonder if we won't discover, when we work with service delivery, if the customers that are in, in the city that are paying county water, that the county is probably collecting funds to use in other enterprises as well. We don't know where all the funds that they're paying the county for their water would go.
Well, the county, they don't, they don't pay the county, actually. They pay the water and sewer authority, and they don't do anything else but water and sewer.
Right. But, but they have to have their capital projects as well. So I feel like that, that we're serving our customers well, and I'm sure when we do our study of water and wastewater, we may want to look at ways we might can reduce our water.
Oh, I think we're serving our, our customer extremely well. I just think everybody will be treated fairly, and, and it doesn't appear that, that if, if you, if you, if your money is going to buy playground equipment, but my money isn't, and it's money from the same source, so to speak, somehow or another, that's, that's a problem to me. Maybe I just don't see that clearly, but it just, it seems like everybody will be treated one hundred percent alike.
Okay, just one question on the service delivery strategy. What happens if we adopt the millage rate and there are adjustments after that?
We
How does that work, or just?
With service delivery, you don't have any mid-year changes on millage rates.
Okay.
So it would be effective at a certain point in time. So, you know, as we're going through that service delivery process, any adjustments that might come in as cash refunds or expenses or millage changes would be based on the date specific in the future, not, it would not impact this current millage rate.
But it could impact
Future millage rate, correct.
This year, twenty-one.
That's correct.
That, that would, could go toward, so would those kind of build up in a fund, if it's in our favor?
I think that would be up to a mediator or a judge to decide.
Okay. I was just curious how that works.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right. If I didn't close the public hearing, it is closed now, and I believe we have the next item on our agenda is this presentation of the rate study analysis, Public Resources Management Group. Welcome. Welcome.
I would just note, it is the lunch hour, we did have lunch brought in, since this is a working meeting for, if you want to take a quick break so you can get that while we get everything set up for this presentation, that might be okay as well.
Oh, it's a pleasure. You want to take fifteen, twenty minutes or something? Fifteen minutes, okay, we all? Okay, we'll do that, thank you. All right. Is he working?
Okay.
All right. We'll get back on our water and wastewater rate study and.
Good afternoon. Henry Thomas, Senior Vice President with Public Resources Management Group. Pleasure to be here today to present the results of our rate study to you. I want to start by acknowledging the staff of the city. It's been a pleasure throughout this process, working with them. Mr. Pepper's staff was very diligent, and we certainly ran them ragged chasing down the data that we needed to do this study. So they, they were troopers and did a great job. And in particular, I'd like to recognize Mr. Ingram, Melissa Forster from the Finance Department. I know there were others that contributed, and David had to be on from engineering. So they all were very helpful in pulling this together and giving me the, the input I needed to make this make sense for your community. Just on a real quick personal note, even though my firm is from central Florida, a lot of my life and, and a good bit of my heart is in North Georgia, my whole family's from up here. Met Mayor Hobgood a while back, and we discovered that he actually grew up down the street from my aunt and uncle here in Canton. So again, it's been great working with the city. So I'll get through this, I'm gonna, I'm, even though I'm from the South, I tend to talk a little fast. I think it's all these years of doing commission and council presentations, but please stop me at any point if you have questions, but I'll try to get through it, and then we can also talk at the end as well. So the, the tasks involved in the rate study were essentially, and, and this was a fairly in-depth analysis, I'm sure Mr. Ingram will, will share with you, but the, we looked at your customer and, and growth rates and customers by class in detail to, in order to forecast revenues. We looked at your, starting with your operating budget for fiscal nineteen, we made five-year projections of your operating expenses, we looked at your capital improvement plan and developed a funding plan associated with that. We identified the need for additional potential borrowing primarily with respect to the wastewater expansion and wastewater treatment plant project. We then looked at what kind of rate adjustments would be needed to fund that. We also reviewed your TAP fees and miscellaneous charges. Again, the, the period we looked at was starting with fiscal nineteen going through fiscal twenty twenty-four. Before I get into the details, I'd like to make some general observations. One, your water and wastewater fund is in, was in really good shape going into this upcoming period, and as a result, you were able to fund in twenty nineteen significant capital improvements from the operating reserves of that fund rather than the rate payers having to, to pay additional rates to pay that. So those reserves that were built up from prior rates were, were used to the benefit of the customers. Two, we're not going to recommend any residential rate increase for the upcoming year. We do have some impacts on the commercial side that may, some customers may see some increases. That's more of a rate structure fairness issue, and we'll talk about that a little bit. And, and then the, the plan also does at least consider that you may be going forward with a water plant project beyond the five years that we're looking at. So there's some dollars in the capital plan that we looked at that are associated with at least the, the initial parts of that project. But again, that's not anywhere, that's not in the near future, so you have some time to deliberate on where you're headed on the water side still. I will say that, that your community has been growing very, has very strong growth rates, and, and that's a good thing. The fact that you're having to, to revisit significant investments in your water and wastewater system treatment facilities generally puts a lot of pressure on rates, but with the growth you're experiencing and where you are financially, I, I think, you know, you'll be, I hope pleasantly surprised that these are fairly modest increases that we're looking at over the next five years, and it still should put you in a position to be able to deal with your systems' needs. One of the things we do in, in, in looking at this is, and we did have discussions not only with your staff, but your, the city's financial advisor, because when it comes time to finance these projects, he's gonna be a, one of your lead advisors in, in how we acquire that debt. And we, we believe with respect to the bonds that will be needed to be issued on the wastewater side, that you're going to have to do revenue bonds. This is probably too large a project for GFA funding. So we want to make sure that the plan has you being in a very credit-worthy, sustainable position so that when you do access funds from outside and borrow, you can get good rates and, and good terms. We also, as part of that sustainable, sound financial plan, look at your operating reserve levels, and while we've been able in nineteen, you were able to use a lot of them, you still have significant reserves. We, our target was to maintain a minimum of a hundred and twenty days of revenue, that's a very sound position, but never more than sixty, as you phase in rates and, and given that capital expenditures aren't real smooth sometimes, sometimes you dip below, but the target is to, to be at a hundred and twenty days. The other target, when you borrow money, you have lender requirements with respect to your ability to repay the debt. We, they, they couch that and they call it debt service coverage, and basically it says for every dollar of, if we take our revenues less our operating expenses, how much is available left to pay debt? Based on discussions with your financial advisor, we have an all-in debt target, that's all your debt, that's your CBA debt, your GFA debt, and the new debt, to have a target of one point five times. And over the five-year plan, we do achieve that. Now, those monies are used elsewhere for renewal and replacement and capital reinvestment in the system, but that, but they are available to pay debt as well. And, and so we, we, the system through the five years with the phase in the rates maintains a positive cash flow, and again, we're trying to minimize the rate impacts in any given year to the customers. So some, some details about the assumptions we made, you were talking about your growth earlier in population. We're projecting the water system growth at about three hundred and fifty accounts per year, that was looking closely at what's been happening with some concerns raised and, and considered regarding new development, but obviously, as, as it was indicated, sometimes new development, it's a little hard to translate it into when they actually become customers timing-wise. I think there's a possibility you might well exceed this growth rate. We, we try to be conservative to make sure this is a, a sustainable plan, but that's a three point seven percent growth rate a year. The assumption also is that for every new water customer going forward, they will also be a wastewater customer. In that regard, the growth rate for, of three hundred and fifty accounts on the wastewater side is a little higher because you've got eighty-five hundred roughly water customers and sixty-seven hundred wastewater customers. So the wastewater system is seeing about a three, about a four and a half percent increase, if you will, over the five years. If we look at that at existing rates, your water rate revenues would grow from about five point four million to just a little over six million over that five-year period, whereas wastewater revenues and obviously wastewater costs are higher, so even though it's a smaller customer base, it's a higher cost, grow from six point three to seven, a little over seven million in that same five-year period. We also took a look at revenues that you received from turn-on fees, connection fees, late penalty charges. Those in, in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty are about five hundred and eighty thousand a year, but they reduce beyond that to about two hundred and thirty-one thousand, and the main reason for that is the Splotz revenue is that we've, is also another, other revenue source for the system is expiring, and so we've removed that going forward. And that was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year roughly. And then based on the reserve balances that remain after we had the big expenditures out of operating reserves for capital in nineteen, we look at, we're looking at interest income on the system at just about twenty thousand dollars a year, and of course, that's projected at very conservative interest rates. With respect to operating expense, in addition to looking at the nineteen budget, we made a couple of, of minor additions to it. One is, is that we put a one percent operating expense contingency assumption in there. That's the one I put in there so I sleep well knowing that I've got you well covered. But the other part where contingency is needed in, in these things and why you need fund balance, one, you're, you're very, the, the enterprises are very capital-intensive, but two, the use from year to year can vary significantly with weather conditions and rainfall because a, a good bit of your water use is irrigation. So you can't, it's not like your solid waste fund where it's a flat fee. The, these revenues vary based on actual customer use, and we do see declines due to conservation over time. So again, we provided for contingency there, and also when we forecast revenues based on rates, we recognize that a little less than one percent we account for as bad debt where, where someone skips and doesn't pay the bill, and we just think it's prudent to consider and factor in that, where you don't typically budget that kind of stuff in your operating budgets. With respect to the operating expenses, they're, the increases are, over the five-year period are approximately four point seven percent a year, growing from five point two million to six point six million. This is just the operating expenses, not the capital needs. Some of the assumptions we made were labor-related at three percent. Health insurance, this is one that's difficult to forecast. I know in my own business, sometimes it's a big increase, the next year it might be flat. We've allowed for ten percent a year, that's being conservative, I hope, but, but again, that's not trying to predict what those rates will be year over year, but have a, a growth over time that allows for, for increases in health insurance. And that seems of all my, my clients', operating expenses, health insurance is the one that often is growing the fastest these days. Repairing maintenance and capital costs, we've got inflated at about three percent a year, so we're assuming that, again, a project that might be built in twenty twenty-three would cost more than it would in, in today's dollars, so we're escalating capital costs as well as your repair and maintenance expenses. Energy, fuel, and particularly chemicals for treatment have been going up quite a bit lately, so we've got those in there at five percent a year. The overall inflation rate that underlies all these assumptions, that ties everything together, is just under two and a half percent a year. Those are projections that we get from the Congressional Budget Office, and they've been pretty, pretty good assumptions in recent years. And then I, I also say that part of what's driving that operating expense increase up over time is that in fiscal twenty twenty-one, we've assumed two additional customer service employees that would be added to the staff in twenty twenty-one. Other than that, there are no other staffing additions assumed in the, in the forecast. Inter-fund transfers, so one of the things we've done here is when we looked at your capital plan and we looked at your overall operations, and knowing that you're making major investments on the treatment side, what seemed to be an important issue to us was to allow for some fund reserve, capital reserve, and ongoing needs for your underground piping, transmission, distribution system, meters and things like that. So we, we built in a, a, a tabulation, if you will, that allows us to build up a fund balance for capital R and R, reinvestment in existing assets, and then once that's built up, those monies going forward can be used as you start to deal with your underground system issues. You know, those are things that are below the ground, we don't see their condition a lot, but clearly you have aging assets that are going to need replacement over time, and we're trying to allow for that. So in addition, and we're, we're, again, consistent with trying to phase in, we're starting at a fairly low number, about five percent of revenues overall, and then we're growing that over the five-year period a little bit each year, so that we're putting in by the end about ten percent of your revenues in for capital reinvestment in, in, in your assets to extend their life and, and make sure that they function as they should. And then our balance that we'd like to keep in there, that we've targeted to hold a balance in that fund of one year of depreciation. That way, if you do have a failure that's unanticipated, you've got some funds there to deal with that, line breaks and things of that nature. If a pump station or lift station goes down that you hadn't planned on rehabbing, you've got some contingency funds to deal with those things. The total debt service is, through, through the forecast is approximately, well, the existing debt is right at three million dollars a year. It consists of three loans that are through the Canton Building Authority bonds, that's about two point two five million, and you can see here that those are coming offline, they'll be paid off in twenty-eight, FY twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-thirty. And then you've got five GFA loans and notes with GFA. They, the annual payments range from a low of thirty thousand to a high of four hundred and sixty thousand for the various notes, and those, this chart here indicates when those will be paid off as well. So when we're going forward with, with respect to the sewer project and the capital improvements program and the funding there, we're assuming, again, that we'll use revenue bonds, not either GFA or the CBA. But looking at the capital improvement program that we've based the study on, it's sixty-four point six million, that includes fiscal nineteen through fiscal twenty-four. So sixty-four point six million, the major projects, as I indicated, the wastewater treatment plant, that's approximately forty-three point eight million. The water treatment plant expansion, built into the, the latter years in the forecast, there's about six point three million in there for property acquisition, design, things of that nature. Again, this is an optional project, I know you haven't made any final decisions on where you're going with that, but we wanted to at least begin to account for that need to make sure that, again, what we're trying to avoid is to get to that point where you have to make that decision and see a large rate increase because we hadn't been anticipating those needs. There also a fairly large investment that you made is in the industrial park water system improvements, that was a three point three million, and then you've got about a million seven in, in INI repairs, that's infiltration and inflow, that's rainfall getting into your sewer system, and obviously you're putting in a new sewer plant, you're investing a lot there, we're going to make sure that you're not treating a lot of unnecessary INI, if you will, in that plant with these kinds of repairs. This just shows you the, the lumpy nature of the capital improvement program, the bar chart shows the individual years in twenty nineteen, a high of three point, or a, an amount of about three point five million. You can see in the middle years, twenty-one through twenty-three, that's when you're paying for the water treatment plant project, and those numbers are significant, and then in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four, fairly minor investments in those years. To put it in another way that probably makes a little more sense as to what's going on, out of that sixty-four point five million, we're assuming that forty point nine million is funded through debt. The operating fund, thirteen million, that was pretty much all used in fiscal nineteen for capital projects in nineteen. And then you've got the wastewater, wastewater development fees, you call them TAP fees, of about four point seven million, and then water and wastewater rates themselves are funding about six point two million over the five-year period. When we look at capital needs, we don't necessarily want to fund them all with debt, and we don't want to fund them all straight from rates. You know, you want to have a balance that optimizes the impact on rates. So if you're using debt for everything, you're going to pay a lot more, especially the recurring things that you need to do each year to reinvest with the system, you don't want to borrow that money because you're just going to accrue a lot of interest expense. On the other hand, when you've got a major asset like a wastewater treatment plant project of forty million dollars, clearly you want to borrow that and spread the costs out over the life of that asset. So we've taken that approach in coming up with this funding plan. With respect to the debt, we're assuming, again, that forty point nine million, thirty-eight point six of it would be the, the wastewater treatment plant. There's about two point three million in there for some water treatment plant projects. If you elect not to go forward with that, this would reduce that debt accordingly. And then in consultation with your financial advisor, we've assumed a thirty-year term, five percent interest rates, and that's going to result in an annual payment of two point seven million. Now, again, hopefully we're a little conservative there, but this is, this is something that's not imminent, you're not doing it tomorrow, so we really can't gauge what the market might look like, so I'm sure he's been a little conservative in his assumptions that he gave us as well. Now, one of the things we came up with here, in order to have a balanced plan, keep in mind that the water and wastewater systems, while they're separate systems and have separate customers, they are an integrated enterprise fund. So what we've done here is, we looked at the water system and it, its rates are in surplus today. today and will be over the next five years, okay? Relative to your expenditure needs. We look at the wastewater system, they're in deficit today and they will be over the next five years. And part of what's driving this is the new wastewater treatment plant project. But being mindful that if you're going to go forward with a water plant project, we, again, didn't want to leave the system in a lurch. We didn't want to focus all the increase on wastewater, not increased water, and then have you facing large increases. I'd much prefer, and I, you know, from the 40 years I've been doing this, I know customers prefer small incremental increases rather than big one-time increases. So when we came up with our plan, on the combined plan, we are deficient. So when we came up with our plan, we looked at it kind of holistically. And basically, we've got rate revenue adjustments in there of 2.5% a year for each year going forward from '21 through '24. This shows 0% in '20. That's primarily focused on the residential rate. It's a 0% increase for residential. There will be some increases on commercial and I'll explain that in a moment. But some commercial customers may not see, it's not an across-the-board approach because on the commercial side, the changes in the rate structure that we're proposing for next year are more related to rate structure and what we believe to be fairness. The same is true with irrigation rates. We have looked at irrigation rates as well and would like to propose some rate structure changes there as well. So when I look at the residential, again, you're currently, your monthly base charge is 13.29 per month. That's a very adequate base charge. It gives you a good, sound stability in your year-to-year revenues. Then the first 2,000 gallons is included in that. But then beyond that, you'll note that up to 10,000 gallons, customers pay $6.51 per thousand gallons consumed. From 10 to 15,000, it goes to 7.80. And then from 15 and above, it goes to 8.47. So I'd like to talk about the basis for why we do that. So when we look at, when we look at residential uses, we talk about essential indoor uses, we talk about discretionary uses, and then we talk about discretionary irrigation. And then unfortunately, with the value of water, in my opinion, much exceeds the pricing in some ways. And when we use potable water to irrigate lawns, it can become, if you don't price it accordingly, it'll be wasted. People will use too much. A lot of people think more is better. So what's happened in the utility industry is we're trying to restrain that use of potable water for irrigation. So we have these rates that go up over the usage levels to discourage the wasteful use of water for irrigation purposes. And that's something that, again, is in your current rate structure and is consistent with what your regulators here in Georgia are looking at in terms of water rate pricing. With respect to sewer, it's a $19.50 base charge. Keep in mind that part of what the base charge recovers is the fixed cost of the service being available, readiness to serve, we refer to it as. So that when you turn the tap, the water's there. When you flush the toilet, it has a place to go. And no matter what you use, everybody should share some part of that based on that capacity need. And that's that base charge there. And then we charge for usage above 2,000 gallons of water because we really don't meter wastewater flows, we meter water flows. It's $9.60 for each 1,000 gallons of wastewater use. So this is a comparison of what the combined water and wastewater bill for residential looks like at 5,000 gallons of use, which is right at about your system average. The bill is 81.12. And you can see that we have populated this comparison with rates from surrounding communities, Edwell Water and Sewer, City of Atlanta, Marietta, Woodstock, Ball Ground, you know, Dawsonville. So this is a local comparison. And really what it shows is that you're right in the middle of the pack. Now, there may be individual systems that are charging significantly more or significantly less, but when we look at the average of these communities, you're right at about the average. So let's talk about...
This isn't my right chart. Is that what's up there in front of them? No?
Mayor Council, what you have in front of you in the paper has been updated. You'll have a few slides that don't coordinate with what you see on the screen. We apologize that was a last-minute change. We split this screen, you see on the, on the screen, we split it up into a commercial and irrigation. So you'll have two pages that will replace this.
So we're going to hand that out. Okay. Okay, so you have those, okay. So let me talk about the commercial rates first. So one of the things you do is you charge every commercial customer, up to this point, you've been charging them the same monthly base charge as you do a residential customer. As I indicated, part of the recovery of the base charge is capacity-related costs. So typically, in the water and wastewater industry, as the meter size gets larger, that monthly base charge gets larger accordingly. With the capacity that a two-inch meter can provide relative to a 3/4-inch meter, they should pay a higher monthly minimum charge. So that's what we've done here. We've retained the 13.29 at the, at the smallest meter level, but as the meter size goes up, and obviously, these folks use a lot more water, so it gets spread over many gallons, the base charge is intended to rise in accordance with that. The other thing we've done too is, and this is something, again, that I think is a fairness issue, and because you do have irrigation rates, okay? So your current commercial customers face that same blocking scheme that the residential customers face, where the bill from 0 to 2,000 gallons of use for commercial is $6.51. But for example, once they go over 15,000 gallons, it's $8.47. So our philosophy in this regard is that most commercial customers are not in the business of over-irrigating or wasting their resources. And you don't necessarily want to penalize a big water user just because they're using a lot of water because it may be essential to their process. Example, and I don't have examples within your community, but if you had a Coca-Cola bottling plant that wanted to locate here, is it fair to charge them a stepped rate that breaks where the same residential rates break? Hospitals, large schools pay a lot more under this approach. So because we've increased the base charges for the larger meters, what we did was we were recommending that they all pay $6.70 for water use for all gallons. So the proposal for the water, commercial water rate is to flatten it at the system average cost of that commodity as opposed to tiering it to encourage conservation. Again, our belief is that the conservation ethic is focused on residences and lawn watering, not on commercial uses of water. An example, two restaurants in town, one with 50 seats and one with 100. Under your current scheme, the restaurant with 100 seats is going to pay more on average per gallon than the smaller restaurant. And again, I'm not sure that that's a fair way of looking at it. So we flattened the water rate for the commercial. When we talk about what you have in front of you on irrigation, you'll see that we, on irrigation, this is the sewer, I'm sorry, you have it in front of you. On the irrigation, what we did was, right now, for irrigation users, you're charging the lowest rate that you charge residential potable water users. So if I have a single meter and I'm using indoor use, which is essential, you're charging that irrigator the same price that you charge that low user on your potable water rate. So what we did was we came up with a two-block irrigation rate that starts at the irrigation levels of the second block of residential potable. So we've matched the blocking of the irrigation to the second and third block of the residential rates. And again, the idea here, this is an irrigation rate and we do want to send a signal to be as judicious as possible in your use of irrigation water. So that's the underlying philosophy there. With respect to commercial, the sewer rates, again, are proposed to have the base charge that goes up over the size of the meter, as well as we've got just under a 2% increase in the, in the flow charge. And again, part of the rationale for that is relative to residential customers, commercial wastewater flow tends to, is more costly to treat, okay? So restaurants and the waste that comes out of restaurants and a lot of commercial businesses is a stronger and more costly influence to treat at a treatment plant than residential. So we've got a little small increase in the, in the cost of the flow for commercial relative to residential to acknowledge that. We also examined your wholesale rates. And here, your current wholesale water rate is $2.35. And Nathan, you might be able to help me if I get a question about who's paying these bills? And it's going to $3.05 proposed. And then the existing wholesale wastewater rate is $4.11 and we're proposing that to go to 5.52. So this is based upon taking all your line item costs and doing an allocation between what we believe is the treatment portion of the cost that would be tied to wholesale versus the delivery portion of the system, which is really what your retail rates are all about. So we're not allocating to the wholesale users the cost of maintaining your retail distribution system. We're allocating them strictly the cost of the treating of the flows that they send to you. And it is a fairly significant increase over what you're charging today. So this one, again, wasn't driven by revenue requirements. It was driven by, starting with the revenue requirements, but what is a fair rate for wholesale? And what we found is currently, we believe you're, you're undercharging your wholesale customers relative to what it's costing you.
This is roughly a 30% increase in a...
It would go from, let me calculate that. Roughly, yeah, roughly three, yeah. I think it's on the water side, yes, sir.
I guess my question is, are you, did you consider that when we do that, everybody that we buy from is also going to do that?
Well, I mean, we did it on a cost basis. We didn't do it on, we didn't anticipate that they would then in turn, somebody else would say, oh, we can increase our rates as well. What we did was we looked at your costs. So the question is, if we're going to provide wholesale services and we've got a retail customer base, do we want to provide wholesale services below their cost to that provider? So this is strictly based on your cost. So, I mean, I, we'll, you know, it's your call in the end from a policy standpoint, but what we've recommended here is the cost-based rate. And I don't know that that would necessarily cause others, if their costs, their rates already may be at cost. I don't know. I did not examine the other wholesale rates and whether they're charging their full costs or not. But I can tell you that right now, you're selling water for $2.35 where over the next five years, on average, it's going to cost you about $3.05 to produce that water. So why, you know, my thought is you would want to fully recover that cost.
See, what happens here in some cases is we sell water wholesale and yet we buy water wholesale from some of these same entities.
Okay.
So, you know, it's somewhat likely that they may or may not change their rates as a result of that.
If I might add, Mayor Council, they're currently higher than we are. I think it's about 2.7. So we need to, at the least...
Well, we need to, we need to be where they are, for sure.
We need to increase at least a match.
Yes.
Before we leave it, Henry, would you back up to page 21 and explain one more time to me why the cost went from 1950 way up to 370 in the six-inch meter? I mean, that's a real...
Okay, so, okay, so, so what we have here is, let's, yeah, this is what we're looking at, right? All right, so what's going on there?
Page 21.
If you take, and you don't have very many customers that fall into some of these meter sizes, but just for example, a two-inch meter will, will allow for flow of like eight times as much as a, as a standard residential meter. So what I'm trying to reflect there is that within your cost structure, you've got customer meter reading and billing, okay? We put that in the base charge. But then we also look at your fixed costs and we look at your peak flows and your average flows and we say, some amount of fixed cost ought to go into that base monthly charge, okay? Well, if we're going to apply that philosophy then, what you're really doing, if you keep your current rate structure, is you're treating a customer with a six-inch meter the same as you're doing your residential customer. So what we believe is that, and this is, this is something that's recommended by most public service commissions, by the American Waterworks Association, we look at the hydraulic capacity relationships between a six-inch meter and a residential meter, and we put that much more money in the base charge based on those relationships. So it's really tied to the volume that they can instantaneously get whenever they want. And that's why the relationships are there. It's tied to the, basically, the size of the pipe that's serving them, if you will.
But they're already paying a much larger fee for the bigger meter, right?
When they, when they pay for the meter initially...
They're not paying the same for a meter that half-inch or 3/4-inch meter.
When they pay that initial meter to install it, yes, sir. But this is not about that cost. It's about, it's about the fact that you've got treatment capacity and transmission capacity and other capacities in the system that is available to serve the larger customer. So we don't, the meter cost doesn't directly impact this as much as the overall system fixed cost. Keep in mind that, and this is kind of counterintuitive, but about 80% of your water and wastewater costs are fixed and don't vary with the amount of use. So if we had, for example, a six-inch customer come in, you're going to have to provide capacity for that customer. If two or three years later, they're using a lot less water, you still provide a capacity for them. So unless they say, well, I no longer need that six-inch meter, then they should pay for that capacity. So that's what's, what's driving this philosophy. And again, I'm not, I'm not aware too many, if any, utilities today that charge the same base charge for the residential customer as they would for a six-inch meter. And this idea of increasing it by the capacity of the meter is pretty much an industry-wide standard. So that's what's going on there. Does that answer your question?
I think so. Do we have a lot of eight-inch meters?
We, uh...
Do we even have any?
I'm sorry, how...
Eight-inch.
Do we have a lot of eight-inch that we're...
The larger meters, the four, six, and eight, you have one or two.
Right. So, so this really, this greatness in expansion of cost, we're not losing money right now because we have very few of those meters.
We do have few and very large. The two-inch and the two, the three, we will have more, the rest on...
Right, right.
Of course, keep in mind that, that when you take a residential customer using 5,000 gallons, they're spreading the cost of that $13 over only 5,000 gallons. When you have a six-inch customer, they're using many, many times that. So really, even though we're increasing the base charge, it gets spread out over a lot more gallons in terms of a comparative to residential.
Okay.
And I might add, there's some of our largest users may ask for, because the overall flow charge will be going down, there's some of those high-use matches that decrease.
Right. If you can see there, again, on the usage side, we're treating them like residential as well. So, and, so what, that may work, but it's not planned to work that way, in other words. In other words, right now, any use over 15,000 gallons, they're paying another $1.30 over what the customer from the prior block is paying. What we've said is all commercial, we believe, should be at one rate because, again, we don't want to penalize a restaurant that is a bigger restaurant compared to a smaller restaurant and make them pay more for their water just because they have more seats in their restaurant. So, and there's really, it's pretty straightforward with most residential properties to have a feel for, how much should you allow for irrigation that's reasonable? And then how much should you start penalizing it? Whereas with commercial, it's really hard to come up with that kind of analysis that says, what is wasteful in a commercial use? So, so we have flattened the rate and that will help some of these larger customers as Nathan indicates. So, and again, who's going to get, who, this will apply to the bigger meters are probably large schools, hospitals, things like that. So talked about sewer, talked about wholesale. So this, back to this idea of, what we've done is we're, again, recommending the 2.5% increase to both the water customer base and the sewer over time. We believe that even though the water is in surplus, there's the potential for those rates to go up quite a bit in the future, perhaps, if we don't keep a steady pace. Plus, I think it's a good practice. A lot of my clients even have inflation indexes built into their rates because your operating expenses are going up and we'd, we'd like to get used to smaller bites of the apple each year, small and incremental. And the 2.5% is righted about inflation. So in combination, they put you right on target to meet your revenue requirements. They make sure that your cash reserve balances are adequate. They build up some funds for capital, for renewal and replacement and reinvestment in existing assets. They, capital reserve balances, a lot of that is, is... Uh, they, uh, capital reserve balances, a lot of that is, is tap fees and, and other funds that we've used uh, to fund a lot of your capital needs. But we are maintaining adequate capital reserve balances. And we talked about debt service coverage. And this just shows the next sub couple, we, we talk about all-in debt. That's all your loans together. But when you get into the bond world and the, and finance world, some of the debt is senior loan, like if we go to get revenue bonds, whereas GFA takes a subordinate position. So we look at both just to make sure you're in compliance. The, this isn't driving the rates. This is a test we do after we determine what the rates should be. And then we say, did it meet the coverage? And in this case, the financial advisor says, in order to be healthy, we'd like to target that hundred and fifty all-in, all-in debt. That means for every dollar of annual debt service, principal and interest, we have roughly a dollar fifty available to pay that. You can see that with the new loans for the wastewater plant, we start out a little bit below that, but we trend back to it. And then on the, the senior lien debt, that would be the new debt for the plant. We're more than adequate on the targets that we were given by the F A. And then this is your, see, your, uh, your two subordinate debts, which include the GFA loans. And again, the dash line is the target. And then keep in mind, these are minimum targets. So if we fail to meet them, we're in default of the covenants of the loan.
Look, let me ask one other.
Sure.
Does any of this consider at all taking money from the Water and Sewer Fund transferring to the General Fund?
There is an amount that's considered in here for indirect costs. It's a little under three hundred thousand dollars a year. And that services to be provided from the General Fund functions to the enterprise. If, if you were a standalone water and sewer system, you'd have to have your own H R department. You'd have to have your own finance department. So the amounts that are built into these rates are, uh, are basically operating expenses under, uh, under proper accounting that is allocated from the General Fund to the enterprise funds for services that are provided such as H R, finance, customer service. Now, I, I know from an earlier discussion, I understand that that amount, that was just taken out of fund balance. So that's not built into the rates going forward.
That was my question. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And that's one reason the rates are not going up, obviously.
Well, again, I, it's, it's not illegal to transfer money from the General Fund to, or from the utilities to the General Fund over and above that. So, uh, I've got a lot of, of clients that interpret, they, they take the position that, uh, well, if it was a private utility, we'd be able to collect franchise fees and property taxes. So we deserve some kind of transfer over. Uh, but you don't have that in your system. You're strictly transferring the costs that are provided. Obviously, there may be some one-time transfers out of reserve balances, but you're not on an ongoing basis transferring money into the General Fund that isn't, uh, uh, an allocated operating expense, if you will. So we also reserved, uh, reviewed your miscellaneous charges. And in the report we provided you prior to your adoption, we'll have all these, uh, in detail. I'm just going to give you a sample of them. But we, we worked with staff to look at the various costs of providing. These are ancillary services that, uh, that the monthly rate payers shouldn't necessarily pay for new customer service, customer deposits, connection charges, uh, tap fees. We looked at all those. And here, just as a sample, uh, new customer service, we're recommending going from twenty-five to thirty. Uh, deposits for, uh, for residential, uh, combined deposit is two times the average monthly bill, uh, going fr- to a hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, that again gives you some protection against skips. Connection charges from twenty-five to fifty. And we did, uh, again, uh, late fees, uh, ten percent, a minimum of five dollars. Uh, meter replacement for damage, if, if somehow the customer damages their meter, we just have them replace that at cost. We also reviewed your tap fees. And we concluded that with respect to your current tap fees, that they're very reasonable today. And that while there's slight differences in our analysis, it's not worth necessarily changing over. It's dollars. But, uh, when you do, if you do go forward with your water treatment plant, you may want to revisit that because that increase in investment will probably drive, uh, the need for a higher tap fee if you want to fully recover.
What about the connection charges? Why did you, why did y'all determine that should be done?
Well, we looked at the time and labor and expenses on making that connection to the system.
That's applicable.
Yes, ma'am. You're saying, we, we basically created a, a worksheet that your staff helped us fill out. And it's based on time and materials, most of these things are.
So we're undercharging.
So it's cost-based. Yes, ma'am. And, and we did look at what other communities are charging on these types of things as well, so that we're not way out of line.
Okay.
But again, your tap fees, uh, are a big part of your revenue stream. And we couldn't justify increasing them or significantly decreasing them. So we, we're going to recommend for now, you just leave them where they are. But going forward, you may want to revisit that.
Okay.
And so to conclude, we would recommend that you consider adopting the plan of the two and a half percent a year increases as well as the rate design changes in twenty twenty. Adopt the proposed miscellaneous charges. We would conclude that this does result in a positive cash flow and will continue to keep you in a strong a- and viable financial position. You're meeting all the, under the proposed rates, all the targets with respect to your loan requirements are met. And that the cash reserves are at or above those targeted levels I talked about earlier. So that's pretty much what I have, uh, for you this afternoon. And I'll try to answer any questions you have at this point.
Okay. Do we have some questions? Mr. Grant?
Did you, in your review analysis, look, I know you looked at the tap fee, the rate structure and all, but did, did you look at our history of tap fee or connection reduction, uh, in services to cost to commercial customers that we've done like in past few years or?
For, for like, uh, new meters and things like that? Yeah, all that was, we did consider that.
So it's factored into that and same?
Now, tap fees are a kind of a broader issue in terms of, that's again, sort of like the base charges. It's based on system-wide costs. So tap fees take into account treatment plant capacity, transmission capacity, things of that nature. And we did review those, not with respect to any one. The tap fees, in my opinion, the bigger the customer, the bigger the tap fee. But that doesn't mean that we know, uh, there's not a correlated cost for tap. Because again, the way you define tap isn't just tapping the line. You're collecting basically what we would call a, a, a system development charger and impact.
Are there any best practices that you guys recommend, uh, or someone else recommends as far as, you know, reductions, uh, depending on the company or the service? Or like you say, the bigger they are, the, the bigger the tap fees are. But sometimes we negotiate, you know, depending on the company or the service or annexation requests and things like that.
So, so to encourage development, if you will?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Now, okay, so generally what we see there in most governments that I work with, they, some of them do have these kinds of funds, but they don't necessarily take it from the utility fund. Within your bond covenants and things like that, when you're borrowing money, you've got to be careful. You don't want to, you don't want to be perceived as being differential. So what we see a lot of times is the General Fund may have a fund set up for economic development. And they may help buy down some of those fees with General Fund monies. But we don't just waive them because again, uh, we don't want to be too discretionary about it in terms of this is a cost-based thing. Uh, and, and most of the case law would suggest that, you know, this is the cost, this is the fee you ought to charge. But that doesn't mean that if you think it's in the interest of the community to bring in this new large customer and you need to give them some assistance in whatever form. Uh, we, you know, it's, it's more common in the electric industry to actually even have what they call economic development rates that might be in place for the first couple of years, uh, that are lower than the average rate. But most of those are also approved by a public service commission. You could do something like that. We're not proposing that. But, uh, it is an issue that I think each community has to look at and say, does it make sense to help encourage this kind of development? The rates have not considered that. No, these are, in our opinion, cost-based.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I noticed that, you know, we're, you take into account the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, but you're not taking into account any expansion in the water plant.
Ju- just some investment in the early years on the water side?
Right.
So that if you do elect to go forward, you're in a position to do that, that the plan will capture that.
But you're not looking, you, you did not project that.
Well, actually, the biggest cost, yeah, the biggest cost for that, we determined were outside the five years. So if you move forward with the water plant, it's probably going to be twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, twenty, somewhere out there. So what we did, one of the reasons though, we did ask you to consider the two and a half percent increases on the water side was to make sure that if you decide to go that route, that it will be.
Position to do that.
That, that we'll, we'll, we'll have the monies to do that.
Right. I think we were, whenever we talked to our, the people who were talking about the water treatment plant, it was not until after twenty twenty-four, right?
It was twenty twenty-four.
Extending the water plant or buying the new water plant was after twenty twenty-five, wasn't it?
Uh, not to directly answer, uh, answer your question, Ms. Wilson. One thing I, I did want to mention is, um, we, one thing we've talked about is in about two or three years, if we decide to go forward on a water plant, that we may invite them back to do a update, a quick update, so that we can relook at that, at that option. Because one, we can't look too far in the future because it's throwing dogs.
It is.
You know, and, and what's going to happen six, seven, especially ten years out. So, um, I know Mr. Pepper's in, and we've talked even, even with Henry saying, you know, we may want to in about three years to come back and say, okay, now we're going to go full speed ahead with the water plant. Here's what we know now and relook at those.
We can only project capacity for a certain number of years, right?
Let, let me ask, uh, you know, we have mostly our twenty-nine million dollars that debt was answered a few minutes ago. Uh, is on our water and sewer system. And you're, you are basically saying that we need sixty-four point six million in the next six years worth of projects in, in order to, to upgrade the, uh, I guess sewer and, and whatever other projects we need exclusive of a water treatment plant?
Yes, sir. And out of that sixty-four million, we're pro- we're proposing about approximately forty million be funded with a revenue bond.
Okay, so that, if we did a revenue bond, that would be sixty, that we'd be at sixty-nine million, uh, within the next five years or so. Now, the, the three hundred and fifty units a year that you had projected, that's just on the Canton system, right?
Yes, sir.
Not where there may be other growth that's, uh, supplied by the county?
That's right.
And that also is per account. Average count is two point something individuals. So that kind of goes hand in hand.
Yeah, it's pretty consistent with your population projections.
Okay, even, even though now some, some places we just provide sewer and some we just provide water. Okay, all that's in there. All right.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, anyone else? Mr. Grant?
Oh, please. The revenue bond you're proposing, just for clarification, it's, it's basically borrowing against the revenue of the system and the, the fund?
Yes, sir. The, the, and the pledge, just to be clear on, on, on overall city debt, the, if you do go into the revenue bond market, the repayment pledge will be this, the revenues of the enterprise. Not, you don't necessarily have to pledge your credit of the whole city. Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. And then, Mr. Ingram, and you're proposing two point five percent, is that an annual increase?
Yes, sir.
Not this year.
Right, not this year, but have we, have we been at like four point five percent in the past, four point five? So it actually.
With exception of last year's, this year's zero.
Okay, and last year was zero, okay. But we had, I think when we looked at it a few years ago, we had projected four point five over the next three years or something like that. So this is actually less than what we had been projected, even though we haven't charged the last two years, so.
Well, and I, and I think what, what the, based on the research and background that I was provided, that when you did that last rate study, you were coming out of the recession.
Right.
And you probably grew faster from the time that study was implemented until today than you had planned. And so one of the reasons you were able to fund roughly thirteen million dollars in capital projects out of your operating reserves was those four and a half percent rate increases actually covered more than your expenditures during that timeframe. Now, again, as it was noted earlier, this is a, of, those benefits did stay within the system. So we use those reserves to fund those thirteen million dollars of projects that if we didn't have them, the rates would have had to fund that. So basically, the rates over the last five years helped fund the twenty nineteen capital projects.
Right, right. So our average, what is our average water bill per customer, fifty something dollars? So are we talking, um? Yeah, per month, if we did that, so. I mean, actually better than I anticipated, but, uh, um, okay, thank you. Good information.
Well, it's also comforting information that we are, that we're where we should be, I think, or maybe a little above where we should be without having to raise the, any water rates.
My hope every time I go into one of these is that I can have a rate path that approximates inflation. Because I think that equates well with people's incomes as they go up. Either if they're working or on, on, uh, retirement funds, they generally, there's cost of living increases that are related to inflation. So the closer you can come to maintaining your rate growth at inflation, I think the better you are. And, and without, without, uh, deferring maintenance and putting the system in, in, in a bad situation in terms of its overall operation. So the beauty of this is while we're only doing the inflationary, we're building some capital reserves for R and R. We're building up that funding. We're, we're paying for the sewer plant in there. And we're at least on our way to having rates that could help pay for that water plant. So I think it's a good story, actually.
Well, it is because when we were hearing those figures from the people that did the study for the water and wastewater and they're saying forty million for this and forty million for this, I mean, it was really quite frightening. So that's why I said this is very comforting to know that we're where we should be at this time with, uh, with a vision for where we're going, so.
Well, and, and I know you're not, you're, you don't, we're all debt adverse. We don't want to issue debt. But the utility business is very capital intensive. And with the kind of investments you're making, at least the, the benefit of the debt is it spreads it out over the life. So it's not just today's customers that are paying for it. It's going to be paid for over the next thirty years. And as you keep growing, the debt cost per customer is actually going to decline over that thirty-year period, so.
Assuming you don't keep adding debt to it, right? Assuming you don't keep adding debt to it.
That's correct. Uh, but, but generally, generally, what, treatment plant, big treatment plants are not something you do often.
Right, of course.
So the, the two, the, the two big things you're looking at are probably once-in-a-generation type investments.
Right. Right now, of course, if, if we were looking at the, the sewer improvements in the sixty-nine million, we very likely, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what the water plant, twenty, thirty million, maybe more, I don't know, for, for a water plant. Uh, so we, we could be a hundred million or so if we decided to, to do that a- at the end of six years from now, right?
Well, I want some clarification on sixty million. We, we're proposing to finance that with about forty million dollars of debt. The other.
Yeah, we already got twenty-nine, though, is what I'm saying. That's to sixty-nine.
Is that enterprise fund? Is that the other twenty-nine?
Yeah.
But the forty is revenue bond.
We propose spending cash on a lot of that, for example, the, uh, industrial park improvements, the, uh, design expansion. You know, we've paid a lot of cash.
I think what, I think what he's.
Plus, we're using tap fees.
I think what he's alluding to is that we still are going to have debt that we're paying off through the year twenty thirty.
Oh, great.
And that, that existing debt plus the forty million dollars debt will be somewhere in that range of up to sixty million.
Yeah, so you've got, you've got three, three bonds that by twenty thirty will be gone. Uh, and, you know, the annual cost of those bonds is a little over two point two million annually in terms of principal and interest. And then you've got on the GFA side, uh, well, with the exception of one GFA note, all your debt that you have it today will be gone by twenty thirty. And a lot of it in the, uh, latter part of the, you know, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine period. So again, that should give you a little bit of room as you take on this wastewater plant. Hopefully, these debts go away and, and it's a, a function of not a, not a incremental increase of a total plant because you've got some declines in debt as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
And, and the other thing you can do, uh, and I, I'm not licensed financial advisor, but you talk to them all the time, is the other thing that they do a lot of times is you can actually structure the revenue bond principal repayment to defer some of it so that it comes after your other loans are paid off. In other words, instead of a straight principal amortization like you do on your home, you pay a, a little interest, more interest upfront, defer the principal, and that would levelize the debt payments around your existing debt. So there's some things that your financial advisor can do when you look at that water plant that might help. when you look at that water plant that might help make the rate impact very palpable.
So, uh, what was your basis for the projection of 350 units a, a, a year?
Well, we looked at, we looked at the population growth. We talked to staff about neighborhoods that we knew were going in and we looked at the most recent couple of years.
Did you, did you consider 2007 through 2012? I can tell you, we had almost no.
No, we, we really looked at the la- the years coming out of that.
Okay, so this is not assume any, or taking into consideration the possibility of any economic downturn or anything like that?
Well, I, I think given the, where we're at today, it's conservative for the growth period we're in. But no, we didn't say what happens if, if we go into a severe recession and quit growing.
I didn't, I just, I just recall what happened the last time, you know, and, uh, we had a lot of debt out there that the payment of which was predicated on the impact fees and, and other dollars and so forth. And then when all that went away, you know, it, it wasn't there to pay with it, pay for it.
Well, and again, that, these, these capital-intensive enterprise funds, it's, you know, the thing is, if we don't do the, if we don't do the investments, we may not be able to attract the growth. So it's a kind of a double-edged sword.
There it is, always, yeah.
You're right.
Mr. Grant?
The revenue, the 40 million revenue bond, would that be a one-time revenue bond or would that be incremental also?
The, the way it's factored in here, it's a one-time debt issue. Yes, sir.
Okay. And if I'm understanding on, on the meter base rates, commercial, residential, it makes sense to me that the, the larger meters, if I'm understanding correctly, as it exists today, like when I'm paying at home, my base rate is the same as Northside Hospital's paying?
Yes, $13.29 a month.
Yeah, that's the reason for the big increase.
I bet they used a lot more water than you, though, Bill.
And I'm paying the same base rate as universal alloy and, okay.
Well, you know, there's, there is a thought of this thing. People ought to be paying on dollars per gallon. And everybody paid the same thing, right? I mean, does that not, would that not make sense if you really did that? Yeah, just had a flat rate per gallon, .0001 cent per gallon or whatever it would be.
80% of the co- let, let's talk, philosophically, 80% of the costs are fixed. We ought to collect 80% of the cost through a fixed charge. But if we do that, it makes the usage charge so low that people don't use the water properly. So what's happened is in the water business in particular, the regulators that regulate your consumptive uses and that look at your, the overall needs of the state of Georgia in terms of water have said, we don't, this isn't a business, that, look, you guys operate more like a business enterprise than every Georgia client I have. I have to tell you that a lot of my Georgia clients blur the distinction between general fund and enterprise fund. And I think what you're doing is far superior. That being said, i- i- it's not all just a business because of this water use regulation issue. So what you're moving to over time through, especially through the residential rates and these increases as use goes up, is you're moving to a, a water rationing for residences. And you're trying to discourage that use at the margin. And so that, that's why that structure's there today. It, it has really very little to do with cost.
So, so for instance, Mayor's comment about having everything the same rates, basically like buying a gallon of gasoline. Gasoline, same cost, no matter how many gallons you buy. But, you know, if, if you don't have very much money, you may not need gasoline at all. You're on a bicycle, you know? And if you, you know, are powering a fleet of trucks, you're going to have more capacity. And so you're willing to pay for that extra capacity. So I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, if you, if you had a flat rate, the problem with that is it, it, is it would make the use, well, if you totally flattened it, then everybody pays the same thing. Then people, some people would just waste it. They would just use it. We worked with a community in central Florida that was a private utility that was charging $25 a month for all the water you wanted, okay? And the water, the water management district said, you can't do that. You've got to charge by metered use. When they put meters in, the, the, they had a cut, one customer that was using 250,000 gallons a month for a residence. When he got his bill based on a metered use, his, his use declined to about 40,000 a month. That was still a lot. He was still a big lot and a big irrigator. But you, you're just, it doesn't, now, on the wastewater side, it probably makes a little more sense to have more of a flat charge. But as you, and you'll note, we have much higher base charges on the wastewater side because of that.
Well, I wasn't talking about a flat X amount of dollars per month. I was talking about meter.
The same use for all gallons.
I'm talking about if, if I pay 6 cents a gallon, everybody pays 6 cents a gallon.
I got you. I'm with you, I'm, I'm with you now.
If I use 10,000, I pay more than somebody that uses 2,000.
So, so again, part of that, and that's the reason, and I agree with you on that. And that's the reason on the commercial side, we recommended flattening it. But on the residential side, the presumption is we don't, we want, the higher uses are putting the water on their lawns, okay? It's not that they're, you know, it's not, it's a, a 15-person household using a lot more bathing and cooking. It's the bigger users in the water side are strictly watering lawns with it. And that's why the step in the rates for, for water, to discourage that as a wasteful practice.
And that, that's treated water? All of that is treated water?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Grant?
One last clarification, so I have this straight, um, because people ask. Um, again, we're all debt-averse and we work really hard to get our debt down from where it was, uh, several years ago. But this plan, uh, proposed plan with the, with the rate increases and the miscellaneous charge, tap fees increases, the 40 million, 40 million proposed revenue bonds, this plan includes how to pay for that, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So it's not like we would be our money and like-
We're not going to come back to you and ask for more on that debt, no.
Like, but we're not sure how we were going to pay for it. It's, it's, it's basically self-financed with the system.
It's baked into these proposals, yes, sir.
But if, if you are moving along and you have a downturn where you have no longer any growth in that system for three or four years, that would make a difference, right?
Yes, sir. So, so one of the things we did, you, you mentioned using tap fees to pay the debt. We've only counted on $100,000 a year worth of tap fee for the debt payment. So what we're using tap fees for is other expansion-related projects where we pay for them directly or buying, or for example, you know, if we have, we have some good tap fee balance, when we go to do the water plant, maybe we use that as opposed to borrowing as much. So what we're trying to do is not make you real reliant annually on the tap fees to keep the rates down, to really make it more a function of the future projects that are growth-related and using it to pay for that. Uh, you know, I had one client that was using all their tap fees to buy their debt down. And when the recession hit them, they had to have a 17% rate increase. So your point's well taken. But we've tried to be very conservative in how we use the tap fees so that you're not in that situation from that revenue's perspective. Now, if the 350 growth rate only becomes 100, then we're, you know, we, we'd have to probably tweak this plan a little bit, yeah.
And what if the 350 growth rate becomes 500 and we have 500,000 tap fees? Can we adjust the?
Buy down those projects, yes, sir.
Or can we bring the rates down for a year or, I mean, so it's not like we're committing to, to a point, I mean, we can say that.
Well, we're, we're showing you a five-year projection. You, I don't know what Nathan, is he going to ask? Last time is understood, you adopted a five-year plan. Now, if you're going to go to the bond market, I'll tell you, that's a good idea because they don't want to take a risk that you won't, that you'll back off three years from now.
No, I, I agree.
But, but you can always adjust it. Yeah, it's, it's in your, it's in your purview to say, if we get to year three and we're over recovering, I mean, you can say, let's take a look at this and-
May have a great year followed by not so great year. But, I mean, I think the five-year plan is good if it's a modest, you know, increase. But it could go either way, hopefully for the better, so, but, thanks.
Based on, um, I guess, a minimum water bill, would there, what, and, and the, I, I didn't quite follow total, the, um, is the sewer rate projected to increase in the next six years for residential?
Now, for residential, it won't increase the first year. It'll stay exactly the same in 2020.
At the end of six years, what would a, a minimum water bill be compared to what it is today?
The minimum, it would be a two, it's 2.5% increase a year, so.
Now, that's, that's in water or sewer?
In both, in both water and sewer. We're recommending a 2.5% increase in the rates each year from 2021 through 2024.
Right now, council, like, know right now, a base rate is?
13, is it?
Yeah, 13. It's 30, yeah, I'm going to add.
Oh, the two, yes, sir.
32.79. That's the base rate if you, if you consume less than 2,000 gallons.
So you're only adding less than $2?
The average over system-wide, it's going to be, I'll repeat, I think that's somewhere else. So the damage is a little over 2,000, 4,000.
Okay, in the last, uh, we have increased it considerably more than that over the last few years, right? Say, over the last few years, we've, we've increased it considerably.
4.5%.
Per year.
Per year, except for the last year issue.
But, but before that, we had not increased it for a long time.
No, back in 2011, it was increased, uh, the sewer portion was increased 20-something percent. The water was 15%. I'd have to go back.
That's, that's pretty close, yeah.
That's what we're trying to avoid.
Right, and then we went a long time and had no increases and then all of a sudden, we had to make a pretty large increase.
That's right, exactly.
So this is, so what you're doing is making sure we don't have that big increase all of a sudden like we did before.
Is there a, um, average number statewide or nationally of annual increases in water rates?
They have, they have CPI for water.
Well, yeah, there's a, there's an index. It doesn't project like inflation, but there's an index, uh, and it, the average increase is roughly about 5% a year when you go nationally.
I was thinking.
But, but again, uh, when you look nationally too, I, I just have to say, a lot of those systems aren't as healthy as you are financially. And a lot of them have deferred a lot of capital maintenance. And so part of those increases that are driving it up way above inflation is trying to catch up and do the right things.
Right, okay.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Henry.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, thank you very much.
That's work.
I understand this a lot better than I do the budget.
I like that he said that our organization is financially healthy.